I'll go ahead and call to order on the Library Board of Trustees regular meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it's six fifty-nine. And again, we're still in a hybrid mode. Some of us are on Zoom. And those that are in person are got their masks on and are following all the precautions. And I think, and if your public participation is still available either through the Zoom or on the the li- or through the library link for those in the public who wish to attend. So shall we have roll call, please?
Sure. Annie Chang Long.
Present.
Dr. Melina.
Present.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
David Ewens. Thank you.
And and just to let everybody know that Dean Surratt will be with us tonight, but he's going to log in at about seven thirty, so he will be here. Okay, so. And the staff that are present, it's Kathy Billings is here, Sean Fay, and I believe, I can't see everybody, but I think Sally Kilby and PJ, are you all here? I can't see everybody. Okay, thank you for all attending.
Kathy, can you unmute the computer in the conference room?
Oh.
Thank you.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you, thanks Kathy. So PJ and Sally, you're there. Yeah, I see, now I can, I can't, they're there. And do we have any presentations for tonight? Oh, public, yeah, do we have any presentation?
No presentations.
Any public comments?
No Papa comments.
Okay, so let's move on to our action. Our first action is the review of the draft minutes of our meeting of September ninth. Again, did you all get a chance to look at the meetings of the minutes from last meeting? Oh, sorry, sorry. Turn my phone off. Any edits, concerns, questions, changes? Do I have a motion then to approve? But David, thank you, David, the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Annie. So I have a motion to approve David and Annie to approve of the minutes of our September ninth meeting. Roll call, please.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Dr. Melina.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the minutes are approved and then moving on. And then again, hopefully in your packet, either it is sent to you online, or if you got it in person, the the request from the Rotary Club, there was a letter kind of explaining. Did everybody kind of get get a chance to review that? So I get, so it's it's recommended that we approve of this request from the South Pasadena Rotary Club to charge admissions and sell books and DVDs at the Community Room event on October twenty-seventh and October twenty-eighth. The profit from the ticket sales and a portion of the proceeds from the book and the DVD sales will benefit the Rotary Foundation. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about that? The letter, it was pretty thorough. And then my only thing was where they talked about, they requested that the chairs be left out. Was that Kathy and Sean, was that going to be okay?
Yeah, that's going to be fine.
Yeah, that that made sense to just leave the setup, you know, overnight, and then they wouldn't have to do that again.
Yeah.
So do we have to, do we have to vote on this, or what?
Yes, yes, according to the current Community Room policy, you do have to vote on this.
Now, does anybody have any questions or concerns or any issues in regards to this request? Okay, well then, do I have a motion to, well, I'll move to, I'll move to approve of this. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mario. Okay, so it's been moved in second to approve the Rotary Club's request for this, these two night events. Roll call, please.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Dr. Melina.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. And then moving on to, and thank you for the color coordinated holiday, winter Thanksgiving schedule. That really helps. I just had one question. Is it, you know, I see that the only during that December week, Tuesday, December twenty-eighth, obviously, the library was, is going to be open. Is that? It it just seems so odd just to have the the one day. I mean, I guess.
So staff are entitled, based on the MOU, the current MOU, staff are entitled to three days of paid leave. It's like a winter break. And so every year, it's a little different. It depends on how the calendar is laid out. We like to try to not have too long of a period that the customer can't access the library. So that's why we put it on Tuesday, so that you have four days closed, a day open, and then you have five days closed. You could have five days and then open, and then four days, or you could have three and six. But again, six days is a really long time for for the library not to be open. So we chose Tuesday because typically after Christmas, people stocked up on DVDs and things to read before the holiday, and then they want to come in and and replace those before the New Year weekend. So it's somewhat arbitrary, but we are trying to put it sort of in the middle to minimize the closures.
And then obviously, there'll be a lot of the PR about this, that the library is open on this one day.
Yeah, this is the third year that this has happened, so I think the customers are fairly familiar with it now. And yes, we do a calendar for them that we start passing out pretty early, so they have lots of warning.
Yeah.
And then traditionally, the library closes at five o'clock on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That's something you guys have approved for for many years, I believe. So that's also in this, in this recommendation.
What, what is? And can you finish with questions?
Yeah, yeah, any, any other comments or questions? You have David.
Yeah, what is the book drop, P G Stone?
The book drop will be filling up the days that were closed, so you have to come in and empty the book drop.
From two to five, so they actually get them and do some processing.
They they empty the book drop and check everything in. And to be the full-time staff did that, and that's expensive. So we now have a couple of part-time staff who have been trained to open the building and disarm the building and do this work, so that they can come in and do that. And that doesn't get, staff don't, and staff don't have to come in, and they don't get paid time and a half.
So you estimate typically on two days closure.
Yeah.
It's long enough to have people coming in.
Correct, like the Sunday, the twenty-sixth, that should be fine, because people aren't out returning books on Christmas. And then because we're open on the Tuesday, the Friday should be fine, and then we'll be open on the Monday, so. That has the last two years.
Kathy, just, what are the, what's the senior center holiday, winter and holiday schedule?
They're closed the whole week, I would think, but I can't say that for certain, but their staff also need to take holiday, and I don't know if they are five forty staff, or if they're nine eighty, or if they're, do you know? I don't know. I don't know what the senior center staffing is. You know, City Hall is not open on Friday, so it's a little different for, depending on your work schedule, but senior center will also be closed, because the staff are entitled to those three days off.
Yeah, and then just, you know, just as a neighbor in the Library Park area. So the the police and safety, they'll know that the senior center in the library is going to be closed, because they'll be, it'll be a little bit more quiet around here, but we still need to have police patrol around the neighborhood. Yeah.
I'll make myself a note. They do know, but I'll make a note to remind them.
Thank you.
Feel attention while we're out.
Thank you. Any other questions in regards to the proposed winter holiday schedule? Again, do we need to, is this, do we need to vote on this?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then I need to, is there, so I'll, I'll move to approve as proposed this winter holiday schedule. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Annie, and second by Annie. On a roll call, please. So it's been moved in second to approve the proposed winter holiday schedule. Roll call, please.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Dr. Melina.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, on to the, on the quarterly item number six, the quarterly budget update. And again, whoever, Kathy, do you put this together, you and Sean? Thank you, thank you very much. It's a, it's a good chart. So after all of these years, I really do appreciate it, so thank you.
So I have two, two printouts for you. The first one, I just, because we never, at the end of the fiscal year, we didn't have the staffing numbers in the system, so we were never able to see what our final end-of-fiscal-year budget looked like, and I wanted you guys to see that. So the first report is the end of fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one. And you can see, we were over our budget by forty-one thousand dollars, and that is because if you look up at the beginning of the report under salaries, we were over in our full-time staff budget, which I can't speak to that, because that's not a number that we produce. That number, that budget number comes from finance. So if that was calculated, you know, incorrectly, I don't know why or how, but we were over in our full-time budget. There weren't any personnel changes that should have caused that to happen. And then also over in our part-time budget, and that is because I had asked, I explained and did the math and told them I needed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And somehow, there was a misunderstanding with finance, and and they gave me a lesser amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand. And of course, sure enough, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand. So that is why we're off, and that is why, at the end of the fiscal year, we had planned to move some money around that was unspent and spend it, but we couldn't do that, because we needed to try to reduce that negative, the overspending. So that's unfortunate that we're overspent. I'm not sure what that's going to do to the audit and how they're going to feel about that, but that's, that's how the year ended. So do you have any, does anybody have questions about fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one?
So, so the only thing that might just peak in in an audit, is there any then consequences? Do we get penalized?
I'm sorry, Annie has a question.
Oh, sorry, Annie.
I was just curious, for some of the other items where it looks like overspending, was it also just something that's kind of like not, wasn't fully planned for by the city and looking at like holiday time, I think?
So holiday, my understanding is that because of ADP, they inadvertently, that holiday normally would have come out of the salaries line, and somehow, it started coming out of the holiday line. And so when the budget was prepared, there, they didn't budget, they don't usually use that holiday line. That's, this is my understanding. So that is why that is so strange. And if you take that into account, it, what in my mind, I added that twenty-two thousand dollars to the nineteen thousand to see how much we were really over in full-time salaries, because the holiday time is just salary. So yeah, that is an accounting oddity, is my understanding. And I, and I, I brought it to Elaine's attention, and and we spoke about it. I don't know if, it doesn't look like that got corrected in the first few payrolls of this year, so I will bring it up to them again. But that's why that is is so much over deferred compensation. I don't know quite what that's about, but obviously, that's over by a significant amount. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why that would be or what that is, but I can ask. And then what else is over? Advertising, but that's such a small, it's only over by like eighty dollars, so it's not really a major amount. And also, the training is over, but it's only three hundred and twenty dollars. So I guess the, I guess my bottom-line answer to this is that everything in the salaries section, all the benefits, I'm not very pretty to that, other than the part-time budget. So if those things are kind of funny, I don't necessarily, am not necessarily knowing why.
It it's looking like the compensation is still a bit of a wobble already this year.
Oh. Yeah, so, yeah, that's strange. I I'm going to have to ask what that, what that's about. I don't know what that is. That's peculiar. So yeah, let me, let me ask about that, and I can report back. I can report back.
It's such a low amount. It's totally unrealistic.
Yeah, I'm not sure, again, I don't, if those budget numbers come straight from finance, so. So I would bring it up to their attention and ask about it. But it, but in all the kind of line items that were actually expenditures that the library is making, we were under for the most part. I think the only place we were over was the the trading budget. And that's because we did that equity and diversity training, which which cost a little more than what we had initially budgeted for.
Well, it wasn't included in the budget originally.
Well, we, we have a set amount for training and.
Right, but not the diversity and equity specifically, because that was something that council.
No, no, our own, we had our own library diversity training, totally separate from the city.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, it was not that same. It was something separate. So yeah, I mean, we normally set aside what we think will be enough for a day-long session of some kind, and we ended up doing this other program, and it it cost a little bit more. And I think also what had happened is with COVID, they basically cut everybody's training budget, thinking, oh, there won't be training. But of course, for us, we needed training, because we're, you know, changing a lot of the way we do things. So we actually did need some training budget. Any other questions about last fiscal year? Okay, if not, we will look at the year-to-date, the year-to-date. It's not really quarterly budget. I just went ahead and did the year-to-date. So what you see here is July first through October eleventh. And we're very much on track in part-time salaries and full-time salaries to look good when I look at a projection and and put in estimated spending. So we're in good shape there. As David pointed out, I don't know what's happening with the food compensation, but I can ask about that. And then everything else is just sort of, you know, we're, we're in a good place. If anything, it looks like we look underspent to some extent, but we are buying and purchasing materials at a rapid rate, and we should be spending all these down by the end of the fiscal year without any problem. So we should be in good shape this fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year, and we shouldn't be over budget at all.
Any other, any other comments or questions or observations?
The current citywide reading, there's zero on the budget, is that?
Yeah, we didn't ask for any funds for that. We're just paying for it. Either friends are helping us with it, or we're paying for it out of our, out of our special department expense line item. It's mostly, the cost is mostly the the books. And some, some stipends for the speakers, and the friends are are helping us with those. So it's not, if we didn't ask for any special funding, we didn't think it was necessary.
Right, any other?
And there's nothing for the library hope study.
Um, you mean the professional services library operation study? Yeah, so basically, that was an account created in like twenty sixteen. Yeah, and it, well, and they kept it for a while, but now that really we're not working directly from that operation study so much, we went ahead and moved everything to professional services, which is the regular account for that kind of thing. So yeah, professional services, that that budget line item is for our, our strategic plan, the library strategic plan, and other things that, you know, we normally pay for out of that budget. So that's just a, an informational item for discussion, so you don't, there's nothing to vote on, so if everyone's.
Good, yeah, I would just note on retirement, we're just, what, this would be three months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can ask them about that, too. Yeah, how are we last year on retirement, probably, so? Well, not, not too bad, but yes, over by thirteen thousand, but it looks like we're on track to be over more than that. Yeah, I'm not sure that, you know, they, they calculate all these numbers and and.
Well, and it doesn't make sense, because last year's budget was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand for retirement, and this year, it's two forty-two. Yeah, but you've already spent one sixty-five, so I.
What is that? You said contributions to?
These would be hers.
Yeah.
Cities' employer contributions.
I will, I will get answers and report back to you guys about those two items.
Something wrong. And this makes me apprehensive.
I hate to be the one to bring it to light, but I guess it's good to be.
Thank you.
Better. Yeah.
We'll find out now.
I, I feel like, no, that's something else. Never mind. I was going to say, maybe they, they upfront pay some of it, but I don't know if that's, that could be true, that it's, it's not like coming out every month, so that a big chunk comes out, and that's why you see it it over, looks like looking overspend, but that could be making that up. Let me ask and find out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there could be something. Yeah.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your eagle eyes on that budget. Now Kathy has a follow-up work to do. Okay, item.
Someone else has.
Yeah. Item number seven, the State Library Building Forward Infrastructure Grant.
Yeah, so I wanted to just give you an update on that project. So there, as as you know, the state budget allocated about four hundred and thirty million dollars for public library building infrastructure improvements, and the state library will be administering those grants in a competitive fashion. Their, their emphasis is on communities of the greatest need, financial need. But when you look at the metric that they're using to decide who's, who needs, who has the high need, we're right in the middle. So I think we have a good chance of, you know, I think there's like six hundred and twenty libraries richer than us and five hundred and something poorer than us. So that's great, because I always think, oh, we're going to be, but they're, they're using a metric out of Stanford, and they take into account a lot of things besides just income, or, you know, I don't know what else.
Is that the L I P C? Is that what that is? What is the L I P C?
What does that stand for?
It's reference along, and and it's.
No, so the, the L I, so there's two different numbers, and if I, let me think if I can describe it or remember. The L I, so that is a number, but it's a different number, and the use of that is to determine whether you're exempt from doing the matching.
Right.
Grant. So that's a different metric altogether, and I don't know where that one comes from.
You know what all is.
Um, we're way too high. It's a per capita library expenditure. Yeah, so, so if you're per capita over a certain amount, you're not eligible. If if you're under an amount, you don't have to match one-to-one, match fifty to, you know, fifty cents to one, or no match at all. And we're not, we're not eligible for that. We, we would have to do a one-to-one match. Yeah, and that's a different metric, and I don't know what it stands for or where that comes from. Actually, I think that number comes from the state report when we submit data. I think that's the self-reported number. When we report our budget and our our capital, they, I think that's that number. Versus this metric they're using from Stanford to determine how needy your community is. That's a different, different number. Um, so again, it, the guidelines, the, the formal final guidelines are not out yet. The way they're approaching this is they are going to be accepting preliminary applications at the end of October. And they're going to use the preliminary applications, the review of the preliminary applications to develop the final guidelines. And then the actual applications will be due in December. So they want basically to get a sense of what kinds of projects people are going to be applying for, so that they can adjust the guidelines to to fit what people need. We did have a webinar with the State Library to ask questions and talk about some of these things, and people had questions like, can the match that we have, can we match with ARPA funds, the, you know, the American Rescue Fund funds, can we match with other grant funds? You know, there are a lot of questions that are not answered yet. So those will all be answered, but in the meantime, we do want to put in a preliminary application, so that they can get a sense of, you know, what kinds of things we're looking at. And so in your packet is a project list that I have reviewed with the city manager, and she actually reviewed since we published this. So we took the solar-powered exterior charging station off the list that at the bottom for now, and also the idea of converting the whole library to solar power, because I think with the Green Action Plan and some of the other city initiatives and the city strategic plan, some of those issues, I think, will be addressed maybe at a, at a broader level.
Well, and I have to say, Kathy, and I, I recommend that you talk to Shaheed. But the Clean Power Alliance is providing emergency backup power to each of its member agencies at a location of their choosing. And I thought that we were either going to do City Hall and Police Fire or the library. Because this is our, our cooling center.
Right, and Red Cross.
So that would be a solar installation with battery backup.
Okay, I will find out about that. She, he's going to help us come up with some of these cost estimates. So I will bring that up with him and ask about that.
Yeah, where the location is, because at this point, I still don't know for sure.
And again, these ideas, I mean, basically, what we submit now doesn't have to be what we submit in December. You know, when the guidelines come out, we may, they, one of the questions I had is, can we ha, can I submit for all these different things? And they said, we're not sure yet. So we'll see. I think, I think it'll, a lot of it will come down to kind of how you package it. But but some questions remain, but but the things on the list, I wanted to just share with you and and get your thoughts and see if you have any, any feedback. The first two items are actually things that come from a facilities condition assessment study that happened in two thousand and seventeen. And one of those things is to replace the fire alarm system, and that, that consultant recommended that that be done in two thousand and twenty, so we are, you're overdue. And then to replace the, switch the low-tension voltage switchboards, which they recommended as a fairly high priority thing to do, and they recommended it be done in two thousand and seventeen. So obviously, we're way, way beyond that. So those are two things right off the bat, that I think meet the, meet the guidelines. The guidelines are for life, safety, and critical systems. So those are two things that seem like kind of no-brainers that the city does need to get done, so if we can get someone else to help pay for it, that would be great. Looking at possibly new exterior lighting for safety purposes, especially if we do have some solar backup, so that we can be during a windstorm or something, that there can be a light in place where there's lights, and we don't have to bring in like generator lights and things. And we definitely, you know, in the general city's general plan and the downtown specific plan, there's some discussion of better lighting and and safety issues. So I think this might be a nice opportunity to argue that, especially the ADA ramp, which is terribly hazardous. So I think it's a good opportunity perhaps to argue for that. If they let us do, again, if they don't let us do multiple projects, we're going to have to work with the city to see what, what's what. And of course, we have to match. Match the funds, so clearly the city has to have the funds in place, so. This, the next item that I think we could argue for also because of the cooling center and the Red Cross is to. Renovate these two restrooms on the second floor, there's not a lot of. Square footage there to work with, but I did talk a couple of years ago with Public Works about what what the options are, and they said, you know. If you didn't have the the long kind of vestibule that we have there, you probably could reconfigure those. So I think that might be a good recommendation, because those are clearly not adequate to our needs, especially if we're. Operating as a Red Cross emergency center, it'd be nice to have a a modern restroom up there. And then again, last is backup power generation, so maybe. You know, I'll talk to Shaheed and we'll talk about it, but if if the Clean Power Alliance is giving us one and we can get. Have one half paid for, maybe we put there somewhere else and do this, I don't know, so, or we look at how expensive, I don't know, we'll talk to Shaheed about it.
Um, the city council is going to have a special session in two weeks on. Use of the ARPA fund potential uses, so please be sure and identify. Make sure that this isn't the the potential to use the funds for matching this is included.
I will, I will make sure that, maybe myself a note, I mean, I did, I went over it with the city manager, but I will make sure that. Maybe. Yeah, I'll talk to Lucy B. Okay. So so those are the projects.
This is looking like it's headed towards six hundred thousand or more. Somewhere in that range, so we we. We have to come up with, you know, the city. Half of it, so we have to come up with.
Yes, we have to come up with three hundred thousand, I know the city council is going to be looking at reserves, we, there is a library. Expansion reserve account that I think has two hundred thousand dollars in it. So again, I mean, this the city council has a lot of things to look at in the C I P and and everything else, but. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity, the the, you know, they're not going to be giving out four hundred thirty million dollars very often, I don't think, so. I think we want to try to take advantage of it, but again, it very much will depend on. Uh, whether we're allowed to submit kind of. Here's the whole building and we need these five things, or whether we have to pick one thing.
You know, it it kind of feels like when you read through it, you can package it all. And 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 say, here's here's all my.
Right.
Whatever safety thing.
Safety initiative, you know, yeah, critical systems. And I think that, again, that they're gonna look at all these applications that come in and come up with sidelines, and I'm certain that we are not the only. Other people ask the same question, so I have a feeling that, yes, that will be, honestly, if they don't do that, I don't know how they'll give away four hundred and thirty million dollars. I mean, there's only so many libraries in California, the maximum amount is of the grant is ten million, so even ten million, that's four hundred and thirty. Grants, and so if they're, if they're, and it's already very stringent about what you can propose, so they're.
I have, I have a question, any, are there any other questions in regards to this, but.
Question after you, Bianca.
Okay, so.
Kathy is not in the room right now, Sean asked to speak with her.
Oh, okay, hi Dean, welcome.
Frozen frozen computer on the computer that's supposed to be recording this, so I think it's still recording.
On our end, it looks like it is, I I just have a question, is when you, when we say that. That the community room is an official Red Cross emergency shelter. On, is there any weight along with that, where are we? It can the the Red Cross, can we up up to date anything, because you know, we, you know, like, like you said, the bathrooms are a little bit odd. What about access to? When you're a a. Emergency shelter, what what's the basic that you have to be to call yourself an emergency shelter, can we, can we add to that at all?
Um, you know, I was gonna speak to Eric Zantison in the fire department about this a little bit, I wasn't really very involved, I mean, I met with the Red Cross. But he was really the one who worked with them to. Did for them to determine whether this space was an adequate space, and so. You know, I toured the building with them and showed them things, but I don't really know the end result of of how they decided whether this was a good location or not a good location. Or what might be lacking in this location, um, you know, I'm assuming they they keep records, they know we don't have like a a kitchen close to the community room, so they. They probably. You know, would activate the space. As needed in in the appropriate circumstances, right, but I can find out more about it from from the fire department, and I was already thinking I would do that. For this purpose.
And I I have to say, we have. Recently, more frequently designated the War Memorial. As a cooling center. And that's really the only purpose that we have used any sort of similar designations during. Very hot days.
And now, and that was, the library wasn't open to the public at the time, and now that the library is open again, you know, we're, we can also still be a cooling center.
And I and I know Annie, Annie had a question.
I don't know if you mentioned this, Kathy, but um. Does the match have to be guaranteed or like committed to at the time of the award, or can we have time to? Raise the match and draw down the funds depending on.
That is a good question, I don't recall whether or not that was asked, but I will ask that question, I think it had to be committed at the time. So, you know, if you have a friends group that wants to raise funds, I think it has to be funds in existence already. So I don't think you can match with money still to be raised, but I will check, I will make sure that that's the case. And again, and the guidelines will, the final guidelines will have this information. But I will find out.
I would just, yeah, say if there is any opportunity to kind of defer that as much as we can, so we can. Get the largest award and see what we can draw down and maybe strategic, if this is a waste of a, you know. Very unawful opportunity to do.
Yeah, and I and I agree with Annie, so like if there's any things that we could. Put into the grant that would maybe maybe help to raise the standards or do some modern modernization, if that's allowable, it might be something to look into.
Kathy, do you have any idea how, whether or not this building has ever been the subject of a seismic safety?
My understanding is that it did undergo, Sally seems to.
You know, I was thinking about the same thing.
No, I feel like when I first started, there was, I wasn't maybe privy, but I remember. The question coming up and Steve getting an answer, I I think that this was seismically reinforced.
Because given the priority to life safety.
Right.
I I think that should be confirmed.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Agreed, that was the first thing I thought when when you were saying that it had been designated as a. A a Red Cross room. Okay, is is it gonna be safe if there's an earthquake?
And that's the kind of thing, the Red Cross probably asked that question, you know, I can't remember all the questions they, I had to fill out a. A survey, but yes, let's confirm that we we've been retrofitted or whatever they need to do, but. Um, I will find out. Yeah, I mean, if you think of other projects, again, this is just sort of a a bucket list, I don't know what will be actually allowed, but. You can think of other things that are in the. You know, in this, the guidelines, and I gave you the full guidelines, so you can read through them, uh, the full preliminary guidelines. Uh, let me know what those things are, I mean, we did think about electrical outlets, but I don't know, I mean, we have electrical outlets, they're just not where we want them. So I don't know that that could be really argued as a. You know, critical need or something, but.
I really love that solar powered exterior charging station idea.
Yeah, this, I met with the city manager, and and she thought we maybe should take that off for now, but we can always put it back on and I'll make a.
What was, what was her reasoning for that?
I think there was a sense that. Maybe it would be difficult to manage the use, like we would want it for times of emergency. But if not emergency times, would it? Be a draw for a lot of. Yeah, trouble of some sort vandalism, and we actually have, um, we have charging, some charging stations. That are. For for phones and devices that. So like during the pandemic, we thought about putting those out, you know, stretching along court and taking those outside, and we ended up not doing that because of. Vandalism and all of that, but um, there may be other ways to to take care of that issue without putting in something permanent. But we can keep it on the list for sure, I mean, again, this is prelim- the preliminary kind of ideas that we had.
If it were something where it could be rolled out. And then, you know, like locked in place during the day and brought back in at night.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's actually not a bad idea, and then, and yeah, some somehow that you. Plug it in in a way that's.
Yeah, and maybe it can be, you know, attractively. Placed where it would be within eye line of the inside of the building, so that. The people at the front can see if somebody's really messing with it.
So I just gotta ask. What has this got to do with the library? And if we're gonna make this in a place where the library staff can keep an eye on it. We're a little bit short-staffed as it is, do we really want to be adding more duties to? Include surveillance to the library staff?
If it's just, if it's just in the eye line, when you look up and you look out the window, you can see, it's not like somebody's gonna be tasked with. Part of your job description is to maintain surveillance upon this device. I I think that anything that allows people to access, especially since we have the. The access for library cardholders to that database. Uh, of magazines and and other periodicals. Something that allows people to have their devices able to be charged, now Kathy, you said we have those inside the building though already?
Yes.
Okay, well, if we have them inside the building, uh, maybe we should just be putting some so, can we put solar onto the building itself? Is there anywhere that we're allowed to put that, given the cultural heritage status?
I think you were not at the, in the meeting when we talked about the. Clean Power Alliance, so so we, on the list initially, I had put. Potentially converting the building to solar power, but what I told the rest of the the board before you joined us is that. I think that the city will have a probably, and I could be wrong, but you know, we have a climate action plan, we have a green action plan. And our, the city is very committed to these kinds of endeavors, and I'm thinking there may be like a a bigger umbrella project that deals with. Um, in city facilities. So that's what I was thinking, and when I, and and again, the city manager said, yeah, let's take that off the list for now. Again, this is a preliminary list, so when the final guidelines come out and we find out what exactly we can apply for. Then we can, we can go back to the table and really hash this out and see what we, what we think the city wants to do. And what they for, and one of the questions that we have still also is. Can the grant pay for staffing, because we need project management, you know, we don't, you know, we don't have a plan or staffing for.
I can't, I can't speak to what it would or wouldn't do, but based on other. Uh, bond measure uses and things like that, that you can generally pay for staffing as long as it's specifically. Uh, attributed to that project.
Yeah. That's what we hope to find out, that's, I hope that that's. Many libraries brought that up in the meeting, like we can't do, well, you know, this is great, you're gonna give me. Four billion dollars, but I need people to to carry.
Yeah, I need people to actually spend that money properly.
Yeah, exactly, and so I think they, I think they understand that.
Me, anything that's taken off the list is never gonna go back on. I I could be wrong about that, but.
Well, no, this is good feedback, and and you know, I'm making notes, so I have my list that I now have says, you know. Ideas in that are off the list, but still on, but still in the mix, so gonna get lost, I don't think.
Fair enough, I shut up late, I'll stop talking.
Okay, no, it's, I I I think, you know, maybe I need to talk to to. R P Kasparian and some of the other staff that, and Shaheed, Shaheed, who's our public service, uh, public works director, and. See what what he thinks about some of these ideas, so I'll be doing that before, he he's gonna look at this before we submit the preliminary. Application.
You know, I just, I just think that, uh, you know, where the uh, the library is located in a relationship to the city. It just seems like the library is more centrally located than the War Memorial Building, so if there's any way that we could. Beef up that the library in the community room is, you know, it's ideally centrally located. That might help. You know, um, yeah, that's all, I'm, just because, uh, just because of the 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 location of this area, it.
One, and having the park, I mean, I think that, you know, it does provide room for people to spread out, plus the interior, so, you know. Park, you could, there's room, but there's not a lot of indoor space, so this has a good mix of. Um, you can really probably accommodate a lot of people in different configurations.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, I I agree with with Bianca, the War Memorial is barely in South Pasadena.
I know that the Maida and Bard tell me that in the twenty twelve windstorm, the library was like, everybody. For whatever reason, we still have power, and that. Everybody here charging, you know, their computers and their phones and everything, because it is, it is centrally located. So. So, yeah, that's, that's all I have, I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed and get any, any comments that you might have on this list, and like I said, if you. Have other ideas that are not on this list, just shoot me an email.
Is there a a deadline to this?
Yeah, I have to submit the preliminary grant uh, application by October twenty seventh. But again, there's no real. Preliminary application and your actual application that do at the end of the year. Yeah, so it's it's really, I I think the state library really is in a, in a. You know, challenge to put together the infrastructure to administer this much money. So I think that they they need these preliminary applications just to try to get their head around what are people asking for? How how are people, yeah, how liberally are they interpreting life safety, I mean, you know, we have the very specific definitions, but. I think they're, they want to get a sense before they, before they actually, so, yeah, we can put basically our. Wish list in the October twenty seventh application, and then find out what we can actually submit for in December.
Also, in response to the concern raised by Dean with regard to cultural heritage and. The historic aspect of the building, I know that the legislature passed a bill some years ago that. Essentially precluded cities from reviewing the aesthetic aspects of solar panels on residences. I don't know if that would apply to other buildings, but I suspect. So the cultural heritage question may not be an impediment, may not have any jurisdiction.
Okay, that's good to know. I mean, we have lots of roofs that isn't, uh, isn't historic, so. That flat roof outside my offices. Is a inferno and not historic, so there's definitely places that we could put, that we could put panels.
Okay, any other uh, discussions, so, and then again, we all heard Kathy, we can just email her if we've got some ideas, so please do. Think outside the box and we'll email you Kathy with some ideas then. Okay, item number eight, on the municipal code proposal.
Sorry, I have, for those who are here in person, I have a bigger version of the.
Yeah, we may have to get our.
Yeah, if you don't have eleven by seventeen paper, you're a pickle. So basically, what you're looking at here are are three columns, the first column is the state code. The middle column is the South Pasadena Municipal Code. That incorporates proposed changes that came out of the meeting on August, uh, the August meeting this year. And then I just included the current South Pasadena Municipal Code in the far right column, so that you can see how it reads now. And then I just included the current South Pasadena Municipal Code in the far right column so that you can see how it reads now. Um, as you remember from last month, the piece that, that we need to work on is, um, I need to consult with the city attorney. And I do have a meeting scheduled to talk to him, um, not next week, but the week after. And we have talked briefly about it. But, uh, we haven't had a chance to sit down and talk about it. So we still need to talk with him about, um, the definition and, and the authority for library grounds. Uh, and we did already talk about that. I've been doing, Olivia has been doing some research on the origination of library park. And when the city purchased the property and what the intent was when we purchased the property and all of this kind of stuff. So he's, he's directed us to, to do some research, which we started. Um, and then again, this idea of authority for artwork display on the building and, and how does that relate to the Public Arts Commission, um, authority? And then finally, um, looking at the, the question of spending donated funds and how, how that is supposed to go. Because as we remember, it had always been understood that the, the board had the authority to make those decisions. And then we tried to spend it and we're told, no, you can't spend it on what you want to spend it on. So we want to make sure we all know what the rule is and that it gets expressed in a way that is unambiguous. Um, and then I want to thank Dean. So the changes that show here in the middle column, um, some of those come from Dean. He, he reviewed, um, everything, the incorporated comments from August and made some, uh, changes. So those are incorporated here. The only thing, I, I have a note, um, under item F. So Dean recommends that we incorporate pretty much all of the language from the state code that has to do with accepting money and, 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 um, administering donated funds. But that also I think is a question for the city attorney. So I, for now, I just made a note that, that, you know, we would incorporate. We would like to look at incorporating those sections of the state code into the municipal code. So those are on the list of things to go over with him when we, when we meet in person. But I guess at this time, um, if you have comments or questions or other things that you would like to, uh, issues you want to raise or, or edits you think should be made, we could share those now.
I'm, I'm just wondering if you should get the word bequest somewhere in here that like it has in eighteen nine fifty one.
Right. Well, and that's exactly what, you know, Dean was saying, we should.
Kathy, Kathy, could you just repeat what Dave, Dave said?
Yes, he said, let's make sure we get the word bequest into the municipal code, uh, which is in the, um, section eighteen nine fifty one of the state code. It talks about, um, money acquired by gift, bequest, et cetera. So just spelling out some of the ways that these donations might come to the city and the library.
Right. I, I would think we would need a legal opinion if.
Right.
Because the language of the trust itself may donate money to the city for the library and have the city then delegate authority to L B R two.
Right. Yeah. So Andrew, we have, we have, that's why I didn't make any changes. Cause I knew that that would be a conversation to go over with him. But he seems very, he seems preliminarily, um, confident that we can make the argument that the whole park is the library's library grounds. So that if we make changes to the code of conduct that relate to exterior library rules of behavior, they will apply to the park. So.
I have a question regarding, um, the inclusion of the term government in two point seven eight B. What is intended by that?
I don't know. That is coming straight from, um.
Fifteen nine one nine.
Yeah.
State, state eighteen nine one nine. I think it should be probably governance rather than government. I think it's an archaic use of the word, but.
Or, or strike it. I mean, you know, it's, yeah.
I think that it's, I think the intention is, is a, a, a permissible definition of the word. It should probably be governance than government.
I think governance looks better.
I see.
It's, it's vague.
Yeah.
And since you're creating something, I think it would be wise to use as much, use words with as much specificity as possible so that future boards won't question what you intended.
Right.
Again.
Thank you. So governance.
In terms of the ratification in subsection D of the purchase and acquisition of books, et cetera. Currently, um, this board does not review that. Are you concerned that if there's a ratification that sounds like it's after the fact? Um, wh- what is exactly intended?
Dean can speak to this a little bit, but I'll just preface it by saying that currently the way that it reads is that the board purchases and acquires books.
Right.
Which they do not do. And the library staff do that. So we were looking for a way to, um, to change that. And I think Dean is the one who came up with that language and used the word ratify. So do you want to speak to that, Dean?
Yeah, you know, I, I originally in the last meeting, uh, Diana, I think you were, you were in absent. Uh, I had suggested a different word, um, which I think was approve. Um, and the concern that Kathy expressed was that that made it sound like we did something uh, that, that we stepped in before they could do anything, uh, as opposed to approving what they did. And so approving what someone did in the past is ratifying it. So I went ahead and suggested that we use the word ratify, uh, their purchases because there is also, uh, as we added also consistent with reviewed and adopted budget. So when they present the budget and say, we want to spend this much on the, this and this much on that, once we review that and adopt that budget for them, then we ratify the purchase that, that they make consistent with it.
My specific question though is, do you really want to do this? You're not presently doing this. Uh, and I would think that this is a far more detailed subsection of the authority that you, that is already expressed in subsection B, where you're reviewing policies regarding the acquisition of books.
Well, it, it already said that we review, we purchase and acquire. So this is actually diminishing our, our job in it rather than expanding it. Cause now we're just ratifying what somebody else does as opposed to us doing it ourselves.
Right, but you're not doing it.
Right.
You're, you're not doing it at all. And I'm, I'm asking specifically, do you want to see a listing of all of the books, you know, in, in order to comply with this, you're going to have now an additional item in your agenda packet where, and I can tell you because on the warrants Kathy purchases books on a monthly basis, books, periodicals, et cetera. Do you want to see that and ratify that as an action item each month on your agenda? I would think that you would be more interested in establishing policy with regard to the acquisition of the books. And if that's the case, then I would suggest that that's already covered in subsection B because you're establishing policies regarding the administration of the library.
And, and I, that's what I said as well. I, I thought that not only section B, but also section, uh, like Dean said, section, um, uh, C where they're reviewing the budget and the budget's going to say, we're going to spend this much on books and this much on ebooks and this much on these types of materials. So you sort of have already weighed in on, you know, the expenditure at that high level. So yeah.
I, I hear you and I acknowledge the, the concern and the argument. My thought process, when I looked at this was thinking to, for example, a PTA meeting where the treasurer gets up and says, okay, so we have checks number, numbers, you know, this through this. And here's the list. Does anybody have any questions? Usually there's not, occasionally there is. So if somebody sees something on there and wonders why we were spending money on this or that, gives an opportunity for the trustees to apply that oversight. But I think in most instances, it would be kind of like approving the minutes of the prior meeting. It would be presented, uh, motion.
It's not, it's not Dean. You're adding administrative burden.
Yeah.
To Kathy because you're going to have to, she's going to have to submit a list to you for your review. And it, it is approval essentially, even though it's after the fact. Um, a listing of everything that she's purchased.
And, and what happens if she's purchased these books and we look at the list and say, we're not going to approve this?
The other thing I can see is it could be time consuming, spending time discussing one book as well. It's some particular person that I, you know, I'm.
I, I agree with the mayor. I like the idea that we craft the policies, like an acquisition policy. That the librarian then purchases books and periodicals, whatever, um, according to the policy.
Yeah. And there is a collection development policy that needs to be, you know, it's one of the many policies that needs to be updated. And that is under your jurisdiction. That's an opportunity where you weigh in at that high level about what grade level do we collect? What do we want to focus on? How much foreign language material, you know, all of these, these are issues. And then the details of which items fill those needs is left to the staff.
What about then, um, in keeping with, because this language, the, the prior language, and we had discussed it earlier, last meeting. So I was, uh, uh, here, uh, adapting to the concern that Kathy had raised about the word approved, which we discussed at the last meeting. Where eighteen nine twenty two allows us to purchase things. And that's where this two point seven eight C comes, came from. Excuse me, uh, D, D comes from. Would we want to leave in that we, uh, may add the word may, leave what was there before and just put may? That we may purchase. So then if there's something that the trustees feel would be advantageous that, that not to second guess the staff, because I know that was a concern of yours, Kathy, uh, in, in terms of approving what they're doing. But, uh, just leaving, adding the word may to what was previously there. So may purchase and acquire books consistent with, uh, budgets. Um, and we could leave a, uh, reviewed and approved budget so that we're not going outside of the approved budget. But if there is something that for some reason the trustees feel should be acquired, that the staff hadn't, we could go ahead and say, let's acquire this.
I like that.
I do too.
And when that GoogooBible comes on the market.
Yeah, I'm skipping.
Right there.
You're gonna, you're gonna line us up. So may purchase and acquire books, journals, publications and other personal property consistent with reviewed and adopted budgets.
Yeah.
Okay, I like it.
Any other? Edits, questions? Concerns?
Otherwise I think it's good. I think we strike a nice balance between providing oversight and not abdicating our entire, you know, everything that had been possibly given to us without taking on too much, um, obligation. And I really do like the idea, and I hope that the city attorney agrees of incorporating that language at F because I think that that will flesh out that aspect of the, um, of, of, of those funds, you know, to make it clear that there's no, so that we're not stuck in a position where somebody questions whether or not we can take the money in. Uh, and then we can decide, uh, I think the, uh, Bianca had questioned, you know, what shouldn't, wouldn't the friends be in a better position to spend this money? I think that might be the case sometimes, but we should be in the position of telling the friends, here's some money for you to go spend rather than them telling us what they're going to spend it on.
Right. Diana, do you have other questions? Cause I know you missed two meetings. We talked about this and I definitely appreciate and value your thoughts.
Thank you. No.
Okay.
I'm not shy.
Okay. I guess that's true. Okay. So I will, we'll plan to report back on this in November. Um, after we've met with the city manager and, uh, excuse me, the city attorney, but, and the city manager, obviously. Um, I did share this with her and she has some thoughts, but, um, we'll meet with the city attorney and, and go from there.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on to, uh, number nine, the library administrative policy manual code of conduct.
Bianca, do you, well, I guess Bianca, do you want to talk a little bit about the meeting we have this week or do you want me to start?
Um, well, no, because it was, it was kind of initiated by, uh, the, uh, the neighbors here. Um, so, uh, in, in this, in this library district neighborhood, we've had now two uh, meetings. We have a, a neighborhood, a, a formalized neighborhood watch in part of the neighborhood park area, library park district. And then, uh, we have like a, another, uh, part of the neighborhood that has got some, uh, concerns. So, uh, the neighborhood watch met and then, uh, uh, a couple of us neighbors with city staff met on Tuesday. Because we would like to see, uh, the library code of conduct extend more into the library park area. So we just had some concerns about exactly what is the boundaries of the library park. What code of conducts policies can be implemented and enforced? Um, and we met with, um, city manager, uh, the city attorney. Uh, obviously Kathy was present, uh, Sheila Pouch was present from, uh, community services. And then, uh, police chief Brian Solinsky was there and then, um, Randy Weiss. So it was, um, uh, it was a very good productive meeting and we really do appreciate it. The, uh, the neighbors did appreciate it. And, uh, and I, and I think it, it, and we appreciated that it's now. It's, it's risen to an awareness. There's some communications and some action that is starting in regards to the library outside of the library. So that's kind of my summary.
So. As I, um, listen to you Bianca, my concern is that the library park, I believe within the jurisdiction of the, um, of the state parks. And so I would be concerned if we established a different policy for this park as opposed to other parks. Because while I realize that this is somewhat different in that you have buildings on the site that are utilized, where you have a lot more people coming and going. Um, we do have, um, for example, the youth house in Garfield Park. Um, we've got the rec center at, um, Orange Grove Park. Um, and I would just be concerned about establishing a unique policy for this park as opposed to the other parks, which isn't to say that, um, I am in any way opposed to perhaps strengthening policy. Um, but there is going to be a concern with regard to consistency. And, and certain, Garfield has, you, you know, the other parks, Orange Grove, the residents aren't quite so near. Um, the Arroyo, again, residents really aren't near at all, but certainly for Garfield Park, residents are right there. So, um. Yes, and residents have been very vocal. Eddie Park, so, um, and.
And that's why we appreciated that Sheila was there because we are aware of that, that we can't, and I know, uh, the city attorney made it very clear that you can't. You can't have, you gotta have rules that are, you can't just have certain rules, you know, you gotta follow the, the rules. And we understand that and, um, but, but it, it, it was just a good start of a conversation, but probably what our frustration was is exactly what is the library park? And so we're getting some clearer, uh, definitions of what encompasses the library park. So.
Right. So, so we're looking for examples from other libraries about their exterior rule policies. And for example. And for example, Burbank, they indicate that their rules apply inside and on the library grounds. Including walkways, parking lots and grass areas. And Alhambra says, uh, it defines the library to include but not limited to its collectionary and meeting rooms and stores. It defines library premises to mean the library, library grounds and parking facilities. So it does come back to what are the library grounds and I was thinking about that. And like I said, asked us to do some research into the origin of library park. Um, and the intent when library park was founded, et cetera. So so we're working on that and. We'll have to meet with him. When we, you know, share that information with him, but I think your concerns, I mean, we have the same concerns about creating. Inconsistencies or creating things that cannot be enforced. Um, and it won't be enforced or that will be enforced, uh, you know, in in not equitably. Um, so it's 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 delicate, it's not a simple.
I think, I think the the concerns.
I mean, people want to just do it, but it's tricky.
The the concerns that I have and and thank you Kathy, cause you touched on one of them. Is, is there a distinction between library grounds and library park? Uh, because that I think would be something that would be appropriate, the library, if there is a. Footprint within the the square block that is the library grounds as opposed to park. That we would have sway over that. The other question I had, uh, and Diana, maybe you can speak to this. Uh, or maybe it needs to be researched is. Because as you point out, uh, rec parks or recreation has a. Um, has those buildings, is there any differentiation between parks and recreation? Uh, I know that it that we could. Look to for analogy to the library has some uh, input in conjunction with. The parks uh, over oversight. Is that clear or am I not making?
I have no clue Dean. Um, but I do have a follow-up question for you. By library grounds, are you thinking? Of a distinction, say based on hardscape?
I'm sorry, no, no, I'm not talking about hardscape, because as as Kathy pointed out. Uh, library grounds for other other libraries is defined to include grassy areas. So I'm thinking that there's actually an outline. Uh, out around the library that is actually considered the library grounds within. The park and that we would have the ability to uh, impose a code of conduct on that. Interior footprint of the park as opposed to the park in its entirety.
I mean, that has been my preference. Yeah, sorry, go ahead Bianca.
No, no, art that Dean, that's what the neighborhood wants also.
You know, to me, we offer wifi, right, which is accessible. Kind of in the close into the building, I mean, it might be accessible all the way out on the edge, but that's not the intent, you know, the intent is that people can sit at those tables. Sit on the porch at the community room, you know, sit at the benches in front of the library and it's an oxley. Um, to me, it makes more sense to have a a little bit of a tighter. Range, um, because we can't, we can't police the whole park. I mean, it's not, we can't, you know. And even as it is, if we have rules. Um, I mean, the rules have to apply to library uses, so so. Rules like. That we have inside, which are meant to make it fair for people to all be able to share the resources that are available here. And implement that in the entire park, but we can implement that in our. Seating areas and benches outside where people are sitting and using our wifi, like to me, that makes sense. And that would be my my preference, but I think there's, I think all of these issues are really. Tricky and we need to talk about it and make sure uh, we do the right, do the right thing. And I think it would be much easier to. Set a precedent like, you know, that the library, these these spaces that are immediately adjacent to the library where library offers services. We do programs in those spaces, you know, we we present information in those spaces where our wifi is, I mean, that that's library grounds. We're not trying to take over the whole, the whole park and then create, like you said, an issue.
I like where you're going, because you would need to be able to justify. Any unique treatment.
Correct.
Relative to library functions.
Right, and just saying, well, the city purchased. The the block in nineteen ten to make library park doesn't really give us the intent that that was meant to be some different space. Than any other park, it's meant to be a park, just happens to be called library park.
I I agree, because otherwise you've got the same issues of public access as Eddie Park. As Garfield, the adjacency of um, homes in the immediate area, I agree.
So that's what I hope to work toward, but like I said, I, you know, Andrew asked us to do some research, so we've been working on that and. Uh, Andrew being the city attorney and uh, we'll we'll meet with him to talk about this. And I think it it applies. You know, it applies both to this discussion of artwork and kind of where does our jurisdiction, where does the library board's jurisdiction? And and it applies to the code of conduct as well. So. So that's where we, that's where we are with that, but we do, there's a lot of um. People want us to work on this sooner rather than later, so we're going to try to come up with some draft. Um, edits to the code of conduct for for sure December, but if not November meeting.
Bianca, is the um catalyst, the unhoused and additional concerns regarding. More unhoused or. Unhoused that are establishing residents in the library park area?
Yeah, you know, it, yes, yes, so it's a, it's that and then the incident that we had over the. Uh, very disruptive behavior of uh. A couple that were in the library park area.
Yeah, I mean, it's really behavior, behavior management, the same. The same kind of behaviors that aren't allowed inside. Are impacting library users' ability to enjoy the library on the immediate outside. Because of behavioral stuff, so this, some of the behaviors that that we enforce inside, we would like to be able to enforce. At our picnic tables or on our benches or on our balconies. Yeah, you know. And it makes sense to do so, because. When people are behaving in a certain way, it is preventing others from accessing the resources and using them in the way they were. Which is how most of these rules of behavior read. You know, nobody's allowed to do something that uses the space. In a way that it wasn't meant to be used and that prevents other people from using it in the way that it's meant to be used, so. So that's where we are with that and and yeah, I I we should be able to have something on the agenda in November to. To get a little farther down this this road, but we may not be ready to adopt a change until December.
Yeah, and and again, I think the neighborhood just really appreciates it, just like I'm sure. The neighborhood around Garfield Park, Eddie Park, Orange Grove Park, uh, the nature park, I mean, there's. We're we're very. You know, urban area with all these kinds of parks surrounded by a lot of residents. And so I think uh, when the residents are listened to by the staff, I think it really, it does. They they heard our concerns and we really appreciated that the staff took their time. To meet with us, so we, you know, we've had two meetings, the neighborhood watch meeting and then this other meeting, um, and you know. You know, like, you know, uh, Diana, you live kind of near the Eddie Park and. Um, I don't know where everybody else sort of lives, I think Mario, you live sort of near Eddie Park, so I'm sure there's, those those are the concerns. Yeah.
Yeah, and for years we lived a budding um, Garfield Park.
Well, yeah. Yeah. So, but 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 again, and I and 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 it's it's a. It it was good, it it's good for us to to hear, uh, I I thought the certi, the city attorney and uh. Uh, police chief Solinsky were very good about explaining. Uh. Uh, California state rules and regulations, so that was, that was good for us to hear that again, so uh. Yeah, so it it was a good meeting.
Yeah, well, and don't forget, we're developing two pocket parks in middle of residential areas. Uh, so. We have to be mindful.
We do, so. But I, Kathy, did we need to, that that was about it that we've just kind of discussing that.
Yeah, that was just a discussion, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, um, okay, and then on to number uh, ten, library operations update.
Yeah, so I'll go through some things with you guys. Um, I wanted to give you an update on all of those uh, state resources that we're going to have access to. Um, again, the state had all this uh, recovery act money that they needed to spend really quickly, so. They are the ones holding up the, they're the bottleneck, you know, they kind of said. Here you all get all these products, but it's a little slow getting them implemented, so Cynthia's been working on that and she's waiting. To hear back from uh, some of the vendors, but but we're moving forward and hopefully be able to announce some of those being online soon. Press Reader, which I told you about, is live and online. We haven't done our publicity about that yet. But we're working on that in the next week or so, um, so check that out if you go to our online resources page, Press Reader is there now. Um, Cynthia, oh, I forgot to bring it, I was going to bring it, Cynthia did a really great um. Piece to hang in our newspaper section that's in Mandarin and English and it's like a little faux newspaper that advertises Press Reader. So hopefully some of our Chinese uh, language readers who come in to read the newspapers. Will see that and and get access to the the Chinese language newspapers on Press Reader. Um. So we're excited about that. Press Reader is just a really, we're thrilled to have that. We wanted it and couldn't afford it and now we have it, so it's it's great. Uh, One City, One Story has been going well, um, we had two programs so far. The Community Garden event on Sunday was well attended, we had probably about thirty people. Um, we had a talk in the community room and then we walked to the community garden, it was lovely. And then last night we had our native plant gardening virtual event with Barbara Eisenstein. And that was also very well attended, more than thirty people attended that. We, yeah, it's really great. We have two more events coming up, which are the actual book discussions and uh. All twenty-three paper copies of the book are checked out. And we needed to um, add digital copies as well, so we now have seven ebook copies. And we also had a big waiting list on the audiobook, the audio, the audiobook is a hundred dollars, so what I did instead is buy a license. That gives us a hundred uses concurrently, so that way everybody, there's no waiting list for the e-audiobook. Cause people want to listen to it right now, so that way they can, they can do that and that was a little cheaper than adding hundred dollar copies that. You're not going to need, you know, six months from now. So anyway, One City, One Story has been going well, we're excited about that level of participation, I think that's, those are good numbers, the fact that that many of the books are checked out is exciting. Um, we uh, purchased and just received this week. A uh, power pack charging station, so. So that, as you know, we have outlet problems, um, so we have now a charging station where we can charge ten of these. Power packs and they have um, a regular outlet for your computer, they have USB ports. They have a USB C port and you can even charge your devices uh, wirelessly on them. So those will be available for checkout in the library so that people can um, set up wherever they want with their laptop. And they don't have to stretch cords across the floor and make dangerous uh, situations and this was purchased for us by the friends. Of the South Pasadena Book Library, their technology fund, so we're super excited and we just got it and tested it today and we're working on. Cataloging it and getting it ready to to start using, so that was exciting. There's ten. Yeah, there's ten of them.
Those are, those are kind of small. What what's stopping somebody from putting that in their backpack and walking home with it?
They have to check it out on their library card and we may hold driver's licenses. And then if they do.
I think that's a good idea, because I don't, I don't think anyone would necessarily do it intentionally, but once they get it home.
Yeah, they would do it both intentionally and unintentionally, um, well, it will also be, we'll have a strip on it that won't show, but. Uh, it'll set off the alarm when it goes out, so if somebody takes it, it'll set off the alarm. But I think we probably will hold driver's licenses and they'll have to come to the desk to check it out, so the librarian or the staff person will have the opportunity to say. This is going to cost you a hundred ninety-nine dollars if you forget to bring it back, so bring it back, so I think. We'll probably do okay with them, but yeah, you take the risk, I mean, all all the libraries that I know that, you know, circulate iPads or whatever. You know, you lose, you lose some sometimes, that's part of the, that's how it is, but yeah, we'll do our best to make sure they don't. Either inadvertently or purposefully walk off with them.
May not be the person who checked it out, but.
Right, somebody. Yeah, I mean, yeah, and it, and I guess. Yeah, it will, yes, it will buzz as they try to go. Um. Let's see, I wanted to mention uh, rentals, just to give you a sense of where we are with with renting the community room. So inquiries are starting to pick up, uh, we had a film rental last week, I think, that brought in more than a thousand dollars. And we have the two rotary vents, obviously, the rotary events at the end of the month. Um, we did work with the community services department and with the city attorney to create a waiver. That renters have to sign that basically says that they understand the county public health rules and they're going to follow them. Um, we are now starting to think about. What about kids events? What about people who want to do a piano recital with lots of youth that aren't vaccinated and. I would like to see that waiver include, and I need to talk to the city attorney about it, but I'd like to see the waiver include. Some of the recommendations about distancing, I mean, this is the problem, as we've had the whole time, there haven't been specific rules for library spaces. So there's elaborate rules for youth sports and schools and camp. Um, and if you look at those, there's distancing required, right, and especially. And in those settings, you're in a pod, so our settings are much more dangerous, because it's not a pod of kids, it's. A whole mishmash of adults and kids all together, so it's a little. I I'm not, I'm, it's a little nerve wracking thinking about having those types of events, but people are starting to ask, so I think. That's our intent is to work on that waiver, to make sure that it includes the recommendations for distancing and then. The renter signs the waiver and it's their obligation to follow those rules. Um, the other big thing is that the practice of checking out community room keys to people and just letting them. Do their thing is no longer.
Yay.
Yes, I I'll never forget, it came and and I was like, what do you mean, you're, you're giving them the keys, I don't understand. So, but it does raise a bunch of issues, which is how are we going to staff rental events, because we don't have any staff to do it. Um, so we have a meeting scheduled next week uh, with the city manager and Sheila. And human resources and the finance director to talk a little bit about that, I mean, I think there's. A number of options uh, that are possible. In terms of how we would manage that, but we're going to talk those over and then I'll be able to report back on that in November. I did want to share some statistics with you, just um, you know, curious, if you're curious about how our numbers are comparing. Now to September twenty nineteen, so I'm comparing September twenty-one to September night, uh, twenty nineteen. Um. So in terms of the number of people, we kind of adjusted it. By, so that it's comparable, uh, because we're open fifty-seven hours, so. Basically, we're seeing twenty-three percent fewer people per hour right now. Um, and I think there's a number of reasons for that, I mean, partly, um. We did a lot of digital, digital resource outreach, you know, Cynthia started right before the pandemic and then we told everyone, we have all these resources. Right, I know, I don't know what I would have done, I was just, I imagine. Um, so you know, ebook checkouts doubled, canopy didn't double but close. So it could be that there are people who are just simply using those resources in a different way. Um, the hours that were open may not be convenient for certain people, uh, we're not hearing that, but that could be. Um, we're also not getting to count, you know, we're doing programs outside, so like Storytime, toddler Storytime had eighty people today. So they're not getting counted because they're outside, I mean, they're not getting counted on the gate count, yeah, it's. Yeah, they had a lot of people too, both toddler storytimes, the last one had seventy-something and this one had eighty. And I think people's, this is from my experience at Brand and we. And I think people's, this is from my experience at Brand, when we had a renovation, and we were closed for a couple of years. People's habits just change, you know, people who used to come here regularly to get their DVDs, they found a different place to get DVDs, or they just changed. And, and honestly, with technology, people's watching and, and reading and listening habits can change over, you know, a year or two years. Um, and then lastly, the unvaccinated tweens are not using the library. And we normally, you know, they, they count for a lot of gate counts, cuz they go in and out a lot, and um, and so, so there, so that's part of it. So I'm not, I'm not, I mean, you know, it'd be great to get back up to, to normal, but i- if you come in, not all day, but it's busy, you know, there's people studying, they're at all the tables, they're, they're here, they're checking things out, and then I would quickly tell you that that's the next statistic I wanted to share is circulation. So this was fascinating to me. There's been a thirty-one percent decrease overall in adult circulation, but a ten percent increase overall in the children's circulation. And since children's is the bulk of our, you know, is the larger share of circulation anyway, our overall circulation is only down from September twenty nineteen by eight percent. So, down much less than the number of people. Um, and what's down the most, which is also, again, interesting and does, I think, tell maybe a story, is the audiobooks and the music and the DVDs are, are significantly down. So adult books are down nineteen percent, audiobooks down seventy-four percent, music down thirty-three percent, and adult DVDs down forty percent. So yeah, I think they're watching things online.
Right.
Yeah, I think they must be. And then again, children's book, fourteen percent increase in children's books, and big decreases in children's audio, music, and DVDs. So all in all, not too bad. Now, I will say that the checkouts, because of auto renewal, a portion of the checkouts are auto renewals, and that is a larger portion. Renewals are a larger portion of checkouts than they were in twenty nineteen when we didn't have auto renewal, so it's a little bit hard to, to adjust for that, so I didn't track. And then the other big piece um, that I wanna share, and that'll come up when we talk about staffing a little bit, um, you know, we implemented holds for the first time, you know, you can now hold anything. So holds in September twenty nineteen, there were six hundred and fourteen. We've had a two hundred and sixty-two percent increase, so we had two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight holds in September of this year. So that's a big jump and a big.
So, so that, that says that people are in fact using the library.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They just shift, they've just shifted, like you said, they've shifted a little bit um, from coming in and hanging out to, okay, have this waiting for me.
Yeah, there are a lot of people who are still not comfortable inside with other people. It's, you'd be, we have some people who we meet outside to give them their stuff, they don't wanna come in, and I think parents too, and, and we're still limiting capacity in the children's room. Um, so that too is probably impacting our gate count. Um, and then, like you said, increasing the holds because they wanna get the stuff, but they don't wanna come in. Um, and to me, that, I mean, the holds number is just exciting, because those are things that people wanted, and in the past, they would've had to come to get it themselves, and now they can just, I mean, it's just a great service that we should've been doing all along, but the reason they didn't do it is they didn't have enough staff to do it. Well, now we do it, we still have to do it, but now we do it, and it's, it's done, so we have to do it. Um, so.
There was a thing on NPR just recently where they were talking about, um, you know, we shortages, well, there's gonna be shortages in the world of books. And so they were looking at some of the trends, and the trend actually appeared to be away from ebooks to people now liking the books. And so, out of, out of the pandemic, people will be to go and get books, rather good, and ebook.
I was talking to Barb today, and you know, when like, when ebooks first happened and libraries started to see their circulation, you know, just start to bottom out, that didn't really happen here. It's in the last few years, it's started to show up a little bit more, but this community has always been book readers, like physical book readers. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think that's interesting that around the country, people are wanting the physical books, but our, our e-readership did, has doubled, which is exciting, because we have such a great collection, and we were, we didn't, like, our, our ratio of e-reader to other readers was sort of off, like, I felt like it shouldn't be higher, so I'm excited that more people are using the ebooks, so. Um, I wanted to give you an update on staffing and some of the recruitments that are happening. Um, we have a vacancy in the aid category, and those applications are currently being reviewed at HR. Uh, the substitute librarian pool vacancies, uh, those interviews are scheduled for Tuesday, the nineteenth. The weekend part-time in-charge librarian, which is the person that we are hoping will be able to help us, um, Saturdays and Sundays, um, is posted, it posted last week, and the review of applications will start when we've received a decent uh, pool. We unfortunately, very sad, we have a clerk vacancy, Hector, um, who's one of our longtime clerks, got a full-time job at the Huntington. So happy for him, but sad to, to lose him. So we need to fill that position, and we haven't put in the requisition yet, but um, we will do that probably tomorrow. And uh, I wanna show, I'm gonna have Sean put up a, a graph in just a second here, but not yet, Sean. Um, I wanted to mention, you know, the full-time position that we was eliminated. Um, the city manager did mention to me that um, she's mentioned that vacancy to count, you know, the, the need for that position to the city council, and I think that that will be, as we've said before, looked at in the next budget cycle. So um, we'll be prepared to make that case and, and have a job description ready and, and, and be prepared to, to deal with that. And then, finally, I met with uh, all the supervisors today, or this week, and we talked about the issue of staffing the library and keeping the library open. We were looking at, can we open more hours? And honestly, we don't have the people to do it right now. So we are, we, we need to fill these aid positions, we need to fill the clerk positions. We have a couple of people who are not working the number of hours they're entitled to work, and I think we're gonna have to replace those people with people who can give us the full number of hours. You know, we, we can't afford to have one of our aides who can only work six hours a week. We need them to work eighteen hours a week, so we're gonna make some changes there. Um, and I, I did wanna show you, so what, I think what's happening to, you know, our staffing number, we're supposed to have ten aides, right? But we never have ten aides, cuz it's the inter-level position, there's so much turnover. So Sean, will you put up that, that graph or the chart that shows our part-time budget?
Sorry, Kathy.
Oh, you can't, cuz it's frozen?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, he can't do it, cuz his computer is completely frozen. Um, yeah, which happened last time too, right at the end of the meeting, so we'll have to figure out what's happening. So what I was gonna show you was simply just a, just a little bar chart that showed our part-time budget. So when we're fully staffed and have ten aides and all the clerks, we spend about ten thousand five hundred dollars a month on the part-timers. And you can see in this graph that, like, over the last year and a half, we're like eight thousand, seven thousand, nine thousand. I mean, so you can just visually see the staffing issue, that, that one person calls in sick, and now everybody's entire day has changed, you know, like, now Barb is, is on the desk, or Mait is on, you know. So I think that, you know, our goal obviously is to get back to our hours, and so these recruitments that we're in the middle of will help us to do that. Um, and the other thing that I wanna just point out is, is you know, why, if we could run the library before in this state, why can't we now? I mean, I, I'm assuming that's the question people would have in their minds. Well, so first of all, we were running on, you know, empty, definitely too. Um, but the holds is a big issue. Um, that takes about four hours a day to process all those holds. The outdoor programming takes, it takes, you know, to get out there for Storytime and bring all the books out, and bring the banner out, and bring all the equipment out, and then bring all that, and it's, it's very time consume, you know, takes a lot of labor. Um, to be honest, dealing with the masking behavior incidents is taking a ton of time. Um, we still have to monitor the children's desk. We do that ten hours a week. We don't do it all the time. We do it during the high capacity times, but still, that's ten hours of someone just sitting in that spot, and they can do some things, but they can't do, can't do all of the things. And then, like I said, uh, the part-time staff availability is, is an issue. We have, um, you know, some people that, that aren't available to us, and we need them, so we're gonna have to make changes there. So again, you know, our plan is to expand the hours as soon as we can, as soon as we have staff to do so. Um, I said to Andy Littman, when he wrote his article, he asked, you know, are people terribly disappointed that the library's not open? And honestly, I asked all of the staff who worked the floor, and they, they really have gotten no negative feedback. They, all they get is, oh, we're so glad you're open. Oh, we didn't know you were open, which is shocking, but we still get people who don't, who are surprised to find us open. Um, and yeah, people are happy and grateful. We haven't, haven't been getting, you know, comments about, you know, why aren't you open at this time or that time. So I think we're serving the public well, and obviously, though, our goal is to get our hours back as soon as we can. So hopefully, some of these recruitments will wrap up, and then we'll be able to do that. Um, so that is my, that's my whole update for you. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, so moving on to communications, um, uh, board president, just uh, really quickly, I uh, helped out with the, the book sale, and I'm sure the friends, Sally and PJ can fill you in more. And I, I didn't, I, Kathy, I didn't realize that the outside events took up so much time, but it's, they're lovely. It's so wonderful to see people outside of the park, and especially the children with storytelling. Um, it's just, it's been very, very fun. And on, and on the Thursday night, the, the arts and crafts, that's been kind of fun to watch too, so. Uh, tell your staff that, uh, yeah, give your staff credit for doing all of that, and.
I'll, I'll let them know, you appreciate it.
And those are my uh, comments. Uh, so I'll just kind of go around, um, let's see, I'll start with Dean. Dean, do you have any comments?
Uh, just that I'm excited that we're making headway on so many different uh, opportunities, and thank you so much, Kathy, for all those statistics, cuz it's, it's heartening to, you know, to actually hear that information about the, the use, and speaking to, you know, Mario, thank you for always, you know, bringing us back to what's our mission here? And, and our mission is, is having this uh, fantastic library be available uh, and fundamentally used, and to hear that it is being used, even if that use is shifting, uh, is heartening.
Good comments, thank you. Um, Mario.
Thank you, Dean. My, I'm gonna be, okay, I agree with Dean. Uh, I'm very impressed with all the work the staff has done. Thank you very much, Kathy. And I think we're making great progress uh, on these revisions, so please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Uh, Annie.
Yeah, I just echo what's shared. Thank you, Kathy, for all your leadership there, and um, I know it takes an incredible amount of to, to do what you guys are doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let the staff know. They'll appreciate that their extra efforts are recognized.
And Dave.
Yeah, let, let the staff know that, and let them know also that this library seems to be u- used much more than other libraries I visit when I go by. Just stopping libraries if I'm driving around, saying, hey, let me go and take a quick look. They're, they're dead.
Interesting.
Some libraries are dead. I was dropping a book today, or, or, if I say, David went on Billwall. Dead. You know, one, two people in there, that was it.
Well, this library, it's a nice library. Yeah, that's interesting.
Part of it's the store.
You always feel welcome when you come in.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's good. Good to know.
And uh, Diana, any comments?
Yes, I don't know if um, Kathy shared this with you, but last month, we solicited a community input, uh, in preparation for a city council's development of a strategic plan with our new city manager. And um, if Kathy has not shared with you the results of that.
I have not.
Okay, I am very excited to say that in terms of library services and events, forty-seven percent of the respondents rated them as excellent, forty-one percent rated them as good. So eighty-eight percent of the respondents, either excellent or good, is pretty darn um, outstanding. And then respondents were asked to identify on a scale of one to five, five being most important, what they valued. And um, thirty-three, thirty-four percent of the respondents gave a five to library services, events, and programming, and thirty-five percent gave it a four. Um, so clearly, and then respondents were also asked, what do you most value about the city of South Pasadena? And the library, I think, was around five. Um, so it was uh, clearly, this really is a cherished institution in town. Um, and part of that is the staff, and part of that is the trustees. And so, you, you all deserve some credit, and of course, the friends. A lot of support from the friends. So um, I just wanted to share that with you.
It's great.
It confirms.
Good numbers, thank you.
It confirms what I anticipated, but it's always good to see it actually borne out.
Have, have those been actually published on the city's website or anything yet? I didn't know I was allowed to share it yet, so I haven't shared it. Um, I wonder if it's on the website. Well, if it is, I'll send the link.
Okay.
Let me look and see.
I know they were talking about it, but I haven't seen it.
I mean, it was public, was it in your packet for the open session? So it's, it's out there.
It, we received hard copy. Um, yeah, and I specifically asked.
Right.
So I don't think it was, we didn't get an adjusted packet, for say.
Okay.
So, no, but it should be published.
I'll double-check and see when, when that's gonna come out, cuz I would love to share it with you, and I appreciate Diana giving you the highlights. It was very heartening.
Thank, yeah, thank you, that's exciting. Um, so I think, uh, see Sally and PJ are in the room, so for uh, Friends of the Library.
PJ.
Okay. So just like the library, the friends are excited to be back in business. Um, we already had one restoration concert last month, the second one's coming up on the twenty-fourth, and it's already sold out. We're really excited about that. Yeah, they've come back big time. Um, there's some discussion of fundraising to put a permanent stage into the community room for the concerts, and that's an ongoing discussion. And we've had two one-dollar book sales, and both of those have been really successful. Um, mark your calendars, we got our next holiday book sale coming up, December third and fourth. Bianca will probably be volunteering there, cuz she's been at all the other sales. Um, and the bookstore's raised over eleven thousand dollars since we were able to reopen in June. So it's been, the bookstore's been very busy. Um, upcoming for us, we've got our annual bylaw review, where we're gonna review our policies and job descriptions, see if there's any updates needed. Um, we're excited to say that we have a, God bless our unpaid intern who's helping us with social media, and who is also rebuilding our website. She's doing it to improve her resume, but it's a huge benefit to the friends as well. And then, November first, the Twenty First Century Committee is meeting to finally start exploring, how do we formalize our structure? So when we have a fundraising project in place, what are our next steps? And then, do you have anything you wanted to add, Sally?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right, thanks. More about the, the strategic planning meetings, or?
Um, I didn't bring my notes for a minute, yeah, yeah. Okay, but it was, I know Kathy wordsmithed the final vision statement for the city council.
This is very helpful.
Yeah, that's exciting. Um, we should probably mention that, you know, the city is going through its strategic planning process, and um, the council had eight hours of strategic planning discussion, and it was fascinating to listen to, and um, that's not gonna show on your screen. And I think it's gonna be a great thing for the city and, and subsequently for the library, because all the departments will benefit when the city has a vision that we all work towards.
Right, good. Okay, thank you, uh, friends, and uh, the trustee, Dave, did you have anything more to add? Okay, thank you, uh, friends and uh, the trustee, Dave, did you have anything more to add?
I, I just see two things from my notes that people didn't cover, they may not be a prequel anymore. And it was mentioned if Jericho Road coming to the next meeting, is that still on?
Yes. Okay, so next meeting.
So they're, they're gonna be.
Nonprofit, it helps nonprofits.
They're working with the Jericho Road, it was a, helps nonprofit and Emily mentioned a given Tuesday coming up.
Oh, true.
And I recall that we got some money out of that last year.
Yes, uh-huh. When is that, PJ, I know. It's on a Tuesday. It's like the something's Tuesday. I know Kelsey's been drafting some.
I want you to.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, back to you Kathy, did you have anything more to add?
No, nothing else except to thank you guys for your time and your commitment, appreciate it very much.
Oh, and the kiosk is going to be.
Yeah, the kiosk, so the, yeah, the friends, yeah, so the friends um, have raised adequate funds for us to purchase the laptop. Uh, or tablet lending kiosk, mate and I are working on that um, as quickly as we can.
And then I just wanted to uh, uh, do a plug for, uh, remember everybody, next week is uh, Arts Crawl. Yeah, uh, out and the library has been uh. Very involved now with Arts Crawl, so if you go to Arts Crawl, make sure you go to the community room side of. The library and Maida will be out there doing a uh, of, an art project. And of course, it's Ron, my husband's poem.
He wrote a lovely poem for One City One Story, so the art project is uh, tied, tied to the poem.
Right, and then uh, Ron's gonna be doing a moderating uh, spoken word. And the South Pasadena High School Drama Club will be out in the city hall, the, the police courtyard, city hall courtyard. For a spoken word poetry event, um, for, uh, yeah, so get out for Arts Crawl and support the arts.
Yeah.
Alright, so is that any other final comments or? Alright, then I'm, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-two, thank you everybody for participating tonight.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Goodnight, everybody.
Thank you.